One. And can we, yeah, it's recording now. Think, yeah, okay. Let's approve the minutes of the November seventeenth, twenty twenty one meeting. I'd entertain a motion.
I still move.
A second, I hit the stop video button by mistake.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. I have read them, although I was absent. I will vote in favor since I read them. All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. Old Business Body Camera Funding.
So counsel, this is Kathleen, so this was a continuation from last week's conversation to talk about body camera financing options. I've asked Mark Gasway, our finance director, to provide another overview of the public safety sales tax. You have seen some of this information before when you're reviewing the two different tax options. He has updated some numbers on here as well, and he also has a financial model that is ready to be presented to the council. I also invited Chief Horch, if there's any additional questions. Based on some questions last week, I did follow up with the sheriff's office and the prosecuting attorney's office to see if they have any updates based on their numbers or projected needs with body cameras. But with that said, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Mark Gasway to go over the financing option with the public safety sales tax.
Good morning, councilors. Can everyone hear? Thumbs up, great. So you've seen this before, some of this is review. There is some updated information in here. I did take the opportunity to refresh the presentation to include a few things. First of all, the last presentation was prepared without the benefit of some more recent updated sales tax numbers. We had a unexpected increase in 2020. Of course, as everyone here is aware, we just didn't know what would happen with the with the COVID year, what was going to happen with sales tax. So with that unexpected increase, and then this year, twenty twenty one, we have a unprecedented growth in sales tax. Right now, we're on pace to hit about a 20% growth rate in sales tax, which is unprecedented. And then I just also want to point out that because the timing of when this sales tax would be in place, I've also included what we anticipated to look like in 2023, so another year of growth in 2022. So that's some of the the new assumptions in the refreshed numbers as you take a look at this. So next slide, please. So we're going to look at the public safety sales tax. Next slide, yep. And just a reminder, this is implemented by by a vote of people, and it may be implemented in tenths up to three tenths. So it can be implemented one tenth at a time up to three tenths. Each tenth, again, with the new projections looking into 2023, would collect approximately $12 million. This sales tax must be split sixty forty, sixty percent the county would retain and forty percent would go to the cities. And if the county were to impose, excuse me, cities may implement one tenth. But if the county were to implement all three tenths, then the cities, of course, could not could not implement anything. So I'm going to go through a couple of scenarios, again, a little bit of review with some newer numbers. However, I just want to refresh the the council's memory on what that looks like.
So if I can just add really quick on the vote, and I know I mentioned this last week, but per RCW, the vote has to be in a primary or general election, so that would be August or November of 2022. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Kathleen. Next slide, please. So this is a scenario one. This is a scenario that the countywide collection would be 12 million. And with the sixty forty split, the county would retain 7.2 million in the first year. And the cities, and again, when I say city, it's it's the cities. This is shared with all of the cities prorata based on their populations, so they would receive 40%. Pretty, pretty basic, pretty easy to understand. Next, yes, next slide, please. So this, in this scenario, this is where the county would implement a one tenth sales tax. And then a city, and I've just used, I've not named the city, but just a city, would implement subsequently. The way this sales tax works is these sales taxes are additive. So if the county were to go first and implement, we would split the first tenth, sixty forty, just like the last diagram showed. And then the second tenth would only be applicable within that city. So it would be split eighty five fifteen. And I've just used an example here, if that city received six million, about half of our county's sales tax, then the county would receive 900,000 and the city would receive 5.1 million. Okay, any, if you have a question as we go through this, jump right in. All right.
I do have a question, Mark.
Okay.
If the county had designated their usage of the funds for body cams and dash cams, would that same restriction apply to the cities?
No, no, that would only be, we can only control what we receive. So the cities would, again, it is, there are parameters of what it can be used for. Public safety, right? So they would have the option of anything that fits within those parameters. It wouldn't necessarily be restricted to to body cams. Okay? All right.
Madam Chair, if I, so do you have any figures, what those amounts would look like for battleground, for cameras, for Washtugal?
I, yes.
And and the second part of the question is, because I would like to have that if I reach out to individual councilors. They're going to ask that, you know, what are we going to get? And then as to the second point that you highlighted, what is the right and left limit to public safety? What can they spend it on?
Okay.
I mean, if you want to know that as well.
I will follow up with that. I don't, it would be a percentage breakdown based on population, so I can do that for you. And I'll follow up with that to the council. Is that acceptable? And then you'd also like to know what falls within the parameters of public safety, correct? Okay.
I can send that to you as well. It was part of the original body camera discussion that we had, had the the bit from the RCW as well as MRSC. So we have that information all reforwarded to the council.
Okay. Next slide, next scenario. Okay, this is a different scenario where the city would implement first. So if the city would implement the one tenth first, they would receive, and again, I'm using example of a city that receives about half of the county sales tax. They would retain 5.1 million, the county would still get the 900,000. And then if the city implements one tenth, then that would only go to the area that was not included within that city. Does that make sense? So the one tenth would be the total one tenth within the county. The city, since they went first, would keep their share. And then the county would split the remaining part that was not voted on within that city. Okay, it looks a lot like scenario two, but it's it's a little bit different. Again, the full amount that the county is, sales tax that's being increased is only one tenth. This is not the additive scenario where the county goes first, and then if a city goes subsequently, it's additive. But if the county goes second, we have to implement the one tenth first in the areas outside of the city. Okay? Then next, the last scenario. Okay, and this is if they go simultaneously on the same boat, where the city and the county go at the same time, again, looks a lot like scenario three. But again, the total increase to the county is only the one tenth. However, it still gets split. The unincorporated or the the areas outside of the city get split sixty forty. Within the city, it's eighty five fifteen. Okay, so any questions on this? And then there are additional tenths that can be implemented. Of course, this this tax, this sales tax can go up to three tenths. However, the cities can only implement one tenth. So anything over, if they were to implement, anything over that one tenth is always split sixty forty. And I'll pause there just a second and let you digest that a little bit. And then let me know. Shared quiring, when you guys are ready, let me know, I'll move on, so.
Are there any questions or clarification at this point? I don't appear to see any.
Okay, let's move on to the next one. And this one, we've we've talked about before, juvenile detention in jail, again, implemented by vote by vote. It may be imposed by counties with populations less than a million, which we qualify. It may be imposed one tenth countywide. And again, just like the the other sales tax, this would re, this would collect about 12 million on a countywide basis. However, this one, there's no sharing requirement. And if you forward to the next slide, please. Makes makes it a little easy, since there's no sharing requirement, the county would retain all of it. Then if there's no questions, yeah, let me move on to one more. There is one other sales tax that our Kathleen asked me to include just for the benefit of the council. This is emergency communication sales tax. This has to be spent on emergency communication. And I've put the in bullet point three there, I point, I've included what that includes. Right now, the emergency communication organization within our county is Cressa. So this would have to be used by Cressa. However, Cressa also receives contributions from all of its partners. And it could alleviate the contribution that the county makes. Right now, the annual contribution to Cressa that the county makes is about $2 million. Again, this is informational purposes. I don't expect that this is, you know, something that we we could do, but I just wanted to include that, so.
And to just kind of reemphasize what Mark was discussing, this is similar to the the measure that was just on the ballot in that it's not directly related to buying body cameras and supporting it. It is a, it's another revenue stream that could come in, that could then be the general fund that's going towards that could be redistributed to body cameras. But I know the the council had asked, have we looked at every single tax that's available and to put out there? So that's why I asked Mark to put this on there, as this is the only other tax that is available out in the community that could indirectly support body cameras.
And and this one might be even a little bit more complicated because we do have agreements with Cressa that would, you know, we'd have to rework simply because the funding, the 12 million that they have now would be significantly higher than the funding that they're receiving from the contributing partners as a whole. And they would, you know, we'd have to really work through the financial plan of what that would mean if this were, if this were passed, so. Okay.
Madam Chair, just briefly comment, because I had asked for, let's look again. Are there any other avenues? I think the public needs to know that we're very limited on how we can raise taxes, very limited available. So I I'm not advocating that we follow this. This one was too complicated, we think, for the public. It could be that they just don't want any additional sales tax. But we are, the the lesson here is we we can't just create our own tax and have it for body cams and dash cams. The public has to know that. So thanks, Kathleen, for relooking and Mark. But, and I'm assuming this is it. I mean, there just aren't any other taxing options that we could pursue to support this program.
Other than the 1% property tax, which the council did not support for 2022, and bank capacity for general fund, which there was no bank capacity available at the time we looked. There will be some available in the future years based on the the 1% not being taken. But yes, we have the revenue guide from MRSC that we have gone through and looked at the different revenue streams that are available. So other than internal funding, this is the only options externally.
Our question? Go ahead. I doubt that we would be wanting to use the emergency communication sales tax for the reasons that have been voiced. But would you please explain the second bullet again relative to the bottom bullet? 12 million is collected, 2 million is is the offsetting cost. What, where's the other 10?
So what happens is is that the sales tax will be collected. It would be designated to Cressa for operational purposes. And they would have the ability to eliminate, I guess, or not receive contributions from its its founding partners. And our share right now, our annual amount that we pay in is about $2 million. So the remaining 10 benefit, or the remaining $10 million would go to benefit the other partners that are that are part of Cressa. And it actually would create somewhat of a windfall because it would be significantly more than the amount that is currently contributed. Now, that's not a bad thing because they have a lot of expensive, you know, equipment that at some point will need to be replaced. And and you know, there's planning involved, right? Financial planning, so you know, that would be a long term solution to how Cress is funded. Again, a completely different discussion.
And I just note, too, that with 2 million benefit to the county, that may be actually less than future costs if they were to remain what was anticipated for future years in our, in your prior rendition of that.
Right. And and that's a good segue because I did update the models, if you'd like to look at those, the financial models. So I think, I think Rebecca's on today. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so this is an update of the public safety sales tax model. And you could, Rebecca, you could even make that a little bigger if you'd like. Yeah. Oh. Okay, and so, councilors, what this is basically showing, it's a 30-year model again. And I've collapsed at the end, the years so that it that it can. Yeah, there we go. So that you can see it goes out to 2052, a 30-year model. And then Rebecca, you may have to just widen those columns just a little bit. Yeah, thank you. Oh. So basically, what happens under this scenario? And I can summarize it pretty quickly. In nine years, basically, you would have received sufficient funds to fund the program for 30 years. So the revenue coming in, you could have a nine-year cap on it, and it would fund the program for 30 years. Okay? And then the other assumptions, we don't have any update to any of the other assumptions at this point. There, I think they're pretty conservative assumptions, so the expense side of it is is pretty much the same. But again, the bottom line is, under this scenario, with the funding that the county receives, now, we're not, we're not counting any funding that goes to the cities. We would have the ability to fund that program for not just the nine years, but for about 30 years, if it were all dedicated to this program. Okay? And I did, as you, as you can see, I did start the year of funding in 2023, assuming it was on the November ballot. That would change slightly if it were on the August ballot. But, you know, depending on what the council decides, I can adjust the model pretty quickly. However, 2023 is what's on here now. Any questions about this? No?
Other question? Yes, I have a question.
Counselor Lynn?
Just, Mark, looking at this breakdown, I'm wondering about that starting number. You're saying about collecting the tax for seven months following that. But has this been updated for the 12 million?
Yes.
For the full year? So seven months would bring in a third?
Well, we only, we only, under this sales tax, we would get 60% of that. We'd get.
Right, right, I'm sorry, yes, but it was, okay.
7.2 million for the 12 months.
Gotcha, gotcha, nope.
Yeah.
Understood.
Okay.
It's the 7.2, not the 12, thank you, got it.
Okay.
I'm curious.
And again, just, just for informational purposes, whenever we start this, it has to be on a quarter. The beginning of a quarter, we have to give 75 days notice. So the earliest we could begin is April 1st. And then the Department of Revenue delays distributions two months. So even if we started April 1st, we don't collect anything until June. Okay?
So the 1%, is that 0.1, 0.1%?
One tenth, 1%.
Tenth of 1% sales tax. How does it translate into what our citizens would be charged for sales tax? So is it?
Yeah, that depends on how much you spend, right? It it depends on.
No, I mean, I mean, what what a realtor, a retailer would charge.
Oh, it's instead of, right now, we're 8.4.
Or?
Yeah, it would be 8.5.
Okay, 8.5, so 8.50 for 100. Okay, thanks.
And then if I could just, just again, for informational purposes, going back to the second tab, Rebecca, the next tab. And you can leave it here, I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time on this, we've kind of been through this. Under the current scenario, under the current scenario, this sales tax in a five-year period would provide sufficient funding to fund the 30-year period. So it's a much shorter time period because we would retain all of the funding. So.
Madam Chair, could I have Mark just state, we used to have a slide that showed cost of the program, meaning the units, the maintenance, and the FTEs.
Yeah.
If you could at least state it orally, what the initial outlay is, and then what the sustainment cost is for the public to hear for those that may not be able to see.
Sure. And and it's right here in the model, in that blue section right below the spreadsheet, yeah, right there. This, the assumptions are, the number of units would be 200 units. The cost per unit is about $1,000 per unit. Annual data storage cost is $1,200 a year. Replacement storage inflation, I'm adding inflation to it so that when we replace it in three years, the the replacement cost and storage inflation is 10%. The annual overhead rate to the program, the direct cost of the program or salaries, however, there's overhead involved with that, is 15%. Our annual sales tax increase, 4.2%. Our employee cost annual increase is 4%. And our investment earnings, because we will be investing, assuming we dedicate this to the body cam program, that money will be invested, and our investment rate would be around 2%. The number of new employees required initially to start the program would be 12. And the average cost per new employee is about 110,000.
And Mark, the 12 employees, is that what was proposed by the departments, or is that based on another study?
Those are, again, if you go down into the notes, so go down into the note section. These are the new employees, again, based on studies, based on what we've learned about these programs. We would require, let's see, I'm trying to see if I have it, there it is, FTE for for 12 positions may include but not limited to our public disclosure, our review, our IT, the PA and the courts. So, and I've, again, these are based on the studies in the notes.
So, and I can share with council, too, that the PA's office, original request, which they said does not need any updating, they're requesting six FTE to support a full-time body camera program. And the sheriff's office, I believe, is five. So that does not include any of the courts or others that Mark may have identified, and some of the FTE might be around. So it is close to the 12 that's on this model, but it may look differently than what the departments are currently requesting.
And and how that, you know, initially upfront, what that would look like and how that gets, how they get added into the program? Certainly, we wouldn't have to add everything upfront. I've just, I've just included everything from the beginning rather than having them work in as needed into the program, so.
And Chief Horch can also correct me if I'm incorrect, but also on the startup cost for just the body cameras was, the sheriff's office was anticipating about a half a million dollars to support the purchase of the body cameras. That may have increased a little bit just due to inflation over the last year since they last got their estimate.
That's correct, those numbers are still pretty accurate as of today. The other, the other thing that I should note with that comment, counsel, is that this doesn't include the startup cost per se, this is the ongoing operations because that's the issue we're dealing with funding. The startup cost, we may be able to do with with grants, with, you know, if if we get this part of it done, then we can figure out the the half a million to get it started, so.
I have another question. And this may be for Kathleen or Legal. What is the ability for the council to dedicate these funds solely to the body camera program? What what actions would need to be taken or could be taken to do so?
I can tell you what we've done in the past.
And I can also share what the council approved. So the council did approve contingent on funding the body camera program for the sheriff's office. That funding was put in the county manager's budget to ensure that we are doing it. And Mark can certainly talk to the policy conversation because they, we can certainly, I think, identify it. So I'll let Mark talk about historically, but I just want to let you know that that funding was placed under, as a placeholder in the county manager's office budget to review the impacts with the PDRs and the staffing to support this.
There's been several times in the past when the council has either created, I don't know created is the right word, but implemented a revenue stream. And by resolution, they are able to dedicate that to a specific fund. And a good example of this is our debt fund for the exhibit hall. They were able to dedicate specific revenue streams to go into that fund. And then the auditor's office manages that fund and says, okay, are we using this appropriately? By resolution, the council would say, in in April, if I'm out of line, let me know. The council would say, first, I'm sorry, Leslie, in resolution that this is going to this program, we would create a fund for it, and then we would monitor it to make sure that it's following that resolution.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. So I think this is, I think this would be a good conversation because looking at the numbers, updated numbers with 7.2 million being, if we go forward with this particular ballot measure, you know, the program's not going to cost 7.2 million. But the RCW allows, at least, I think it says one third, at least one third have to go to public safety. But it also says the section may be expanded for criminal justice purposes. They are defined as activities that substantially assist the criminal justice system, which may include circumstances where ancillary benefit to the civil justice system occurs, includes domestic violence services such as those provided by domestic violence programs. Community advocates and legal advocates is defined by another RCW. And then it says after May 13, 2021, through December 2023, criminal justice purposes also include local government programs which have a reasonable relationship to reducing the numbers of people interacting with criminal justice system, but not limited to reducing homelessness or improving behavioral health. So my only point there is, is that I think if we say we could dedicate a certain portion of the sales tax to the body camera program, which we pay for it over the next number of years, given we're now talking about 7.2 million dollars, there may be other opportunities. over the next number of years, given we're now talking about 7.2 million dollars, there may be other opportunities for the other funds that could go to programs that are, that still fulfill the RCW.
Absolutely.
So, Madam Chair, can I, I'd like to add some thoughts because I, I think Counselor Lentz's point and, and then what Julie Olson just brought up too, is very important because we, we need to be real clear as we just learned. I mean, we heard from some constituents that they just had no idea what that last ballot measure was about. So we do want to be transparent. And perhaps a way to do that is with a resolution that moves forward even in advance of the ballot measure that states if the ballot measure is passed, that all of that money upfront will first go to body cams in the dash cam program and the FTEs supporting it. To that, I would say, I don't, I don't know why the courts would need more people. The PA might need some. The public defense certainly is going to spend more money on this program. I mean, there's going to be a lot of costs that we haven't quite captured yet, but we, we just need to be transparent and we are short money for the sheriff's office. They need more people. We, we are going to need to do some remodeling of, of the jail ultimately. And so we just need to be transparent as to where this money is going to go. And maybe a resolution upfront would help tee that off for any ballot measure if we go this route. I think it is important to just let the public know what they're, what they're going to be voting on. And certainly, we need to hear from the city councils, we need to hear from the cities. You know, they need to tee up and support this as well. Where, where are they going to spend the money? I mean, that's, that's the homework to be done in advance of this ballot measure. We just don't have other mechanisms to define the, the sales tax and how it's going to go. But we did hear people say, hey, we don't want this money to go to something else. But we do support body cams and dash cams. So that would be the first funding. But we do have other needs that the law would allow and certainly the cities all do. Anyway, tho, those are my comments. I think a resolution may be a good way to go.
Other questions or comments on that? Okay. Does, does this conclude your presentation, Mark?
If, if the council has no more questions, that's all I have today. I will follow up though with the, the two requests about the, the split for the cities. And then some parameters that the public safety can
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to new business then, charter amendments. I think Leslie is going to present this. Is that right or?
Yeah, that is right. Yes. Good morning, counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this morning. Figured it was a good time to go over the charter amendments that were passed by the voters in November. And we know what that means moving forward. And so I will go through this PowerPoint and add some additional language and then I can take any questions you might have. So the first two amendments by the Charter Review Commission are ones regarding the elected offices of the county as well as the county counselors. These go into effect, are currently in effect once the election was certified on November 23rd, 2021. What this means is that for the county elected offices, which includes the assessor, the auditor, the clerk, prosecuting attorney, sheriff and treasurer, that those are nonpartisan positions. And the same is true for the county counselors. Now, what that means is that when it comes time for candidate to file, to run for a particular position, they would be listed as nonpartisan. And there would not be a requirement to state a party preference or to state that there's no party preference. And also those positions would be listed under county nonpartisan offices on the ballot. Candidates, however, would still have the opportunity to align with a political party, but that preference would not be shown on the ballot or in the voter's guide pamphlet. Are there any questions on amendments one or two before we move on?
I just have a quick one. So did you say these are in effect now, after the, after the vote was cert, not January 1, but now?
Yes, that, that's what the amendment stated that they would come into effect once the vote was was completed. So that has already happened.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, but most of these, I'll just say, actually, most of these amendments, except for amendment three, which we'll talk about next, have that same timeframe that they go into effect once the election was certified on November 23rd. So if we go to the next slide. So this is another amendment by the Charter Review that was proposed by the Charter Review Commission. It's the amendment number three. It's what's called the five district council amendment. And so essentially what the voters approved is that the current four districts have been expanded to include five geographic districts. Also, what this states, and I'll clarify, it says that it replaces the countywide chair position with a fifth district counselor. And we'll go into, you know, what that means in terms of this transitional period before January 1, because this particular amendment does not come into effect until January 1, 2022. And so what this means is that currently the county chair position was voted on by the entire county. So with the new provision that will start in January 1, there would be a fifth district counselor. And as it states in the next bullet, each year, the council at its first regular meeting will elect one of its members to become the chair and that will happen each year. Next slide, please. And so the charter amendment itself provides for what is called transitional provisions. And so what this means is that as of January 1, 2022, it specifically lists which counselors will be assigned to which districts. And so for District 1, it would be Counselor Lentz. For District 2, that would be Counselor Olson. District 3 would be Counselor Bowerman. District 4 would be Counselor Medvedje and District 5 would be Chair Quine O'Brien. And I, I have an indication there that as I'd already discussed, that the council elect one of its members to be the chair at the first regular meeting in January 2022. And so the charter specifically sets forth that the county council chair immediately prior shall represent the remainder of their current term as District 5. So for the year 2022, Chair Quine O'Brien would be the counselor assigned to representing District 5 through the end of that term in 2022. Now, the transitional provisions also provided, if we could go to the next slide, please. Actually, let's go back to the prior slide. I didn't put that in there, but I will talk about it. So the reason that, you know, we have this District 3 and District 4, the charter amendment has information in it that discusses what happens when there are two or more current counselors that reside in the same district under these new boundaries that have been elected by the voters. So if two members reside in the same district, the council member that is residing, and it uses the word residing, so that would mean a physical residence address. The council member that's residing closest to another council district other than the district that the two or more counselors have in common, then that council residing closest to another council district would represent that particular district. And so in this case, and I want to show this particular information, but according to GIS information, Counselor Bowerman and Counselor Medvedje, although they are both residing in District 4, Counselor Bowerman resides closest to District 3. So that, that's why this designation is stated as it is.
And Can I ask a quick question, Leslie?
Certainly.
So what is the end term for the designations as listed here? You've already mentioned it for the chair. How about for the others?
That's a very good question and that was my next point. So you beat me to it. So the charter amendment states that these designations, this will be for the entire term of that elected term. So in other words, for the counselors whose terms end in 2022, it would end at that point. For the counselors whose terms end in 2024, it would continue, they would continue to represent those districts until that time. Now, and I'll make a, a small note that this is what is in effect as of January 1, 2022. However, you know, we, there is a redistricting process going on and that may change depending on the outcome of that redistricting process. Okay, we can go to the next slide. And so what this also means is that once counselor's term has ended and there's a new election, candidates who file to run need to reside within the boundaries of the district that they intend to run in. And that's actually pursuant to the Clark County Charter, which is Section 6.3 specifically states that that is a requirement in running. The other thing I wanted to note, it talks about salary schedule. And as of January 1, 2023, all the county councils will receive the same compensation. However, for this interim, for the transitional period, the salary schedule for the council members in effect as of January 1 shall continue until completion of their term. So in terms of the current charter states that the chair has a 20% bump in pay because that is in effect now before January 1, that will continue through the end of the 2022 term.
Madam Chair, I did have a, a question. I may have just missed it. But everyone stays in their position and salary until the end of their term. As far as the chair position, wouldn't she remain the chair until the end of her term? So we wouldn't be voting on a chair within the council until after her term is up?
That is a, a good question. Thank you, Counselor Medvedje, but that is not what the charter states. The charter states that beginning January 1, 2022, the council at its first regular meeting will elect its own chair rather than, that, that, that's just what the amendment says. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it, it, it is additive to some of the confusion that may result, one from the ballot measure that never, you know, it used forecasts for numbers and, and and argued that each of the five districts would be of equal strength. And that turned out to be not true when the census data was released. And also, you know, if one were to look at the end result where three of us, the, the majority of the council are now in the same district, that's the worst form of gerrymandering I have ever seen an example of. And there was never a mention of it through any of the charter meetings, nor any mention of it in the pro or con or in the ballot measure itself that that would be the end result. So I'm really concerned about that aspect of this process.
And, and I would say too, it, it concerns me as well because it's very evident to me in reading this, the charter amendment more closely that the, if not all of the charter commission knew that they were drawing the lines to eliminate the majority of the council by placing them all in one district. If they didn't know that, they would not have had to address that the person living closest to the line would still remain in a certain district. They knew it and I, it is, I think it's outrageous and I actually think it is, it is something that should be litigated because of how deceptive and how, how gerrymandering it was. I, I just think it's, it's, nobody really knew this, except probably, it was never discussed publicly, I understand, in the commission. But it is clear to me that it was discussed behind closed doors. And it, it was a plan. And frankly, I thi, I, I don't believe voters knew it. They may have known the result of the chair not holding the position, but I don't think they were aware that the entire majority of the council was placed in one district, thereby eliminating at least two counselors right off the bat. So I, I just make that statement that this really should, unless this is changed by districting, by the redistricting of the charter, of the, of redistricting committee or the council, this should be litigated because it's, it's wrong in my view. So that said, are there, I, because I don't have a question, I just had a, a, a statement to make regarding this. Are there any other questions at this point in the presentation?
I just have a, a, a comment and then a question first. Completely with what you just said, Chair. And secondly, which set of boundaries did you use for the determination of who's in what district? Did you use the ones in the voter's pamphlet?
I used the one that was in the voter's pamphlet that was approved by the voters. The one that was attached to the charter amendment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If there are no other questions on this particular amendment, we'll move on to the next slide. So this is charter amendment number four, which was also proposed by the Charter Review Commission. And essentially what this does is it changes the frequency of the home rule charter review from at least every 10 years, which is what it is or what it was currently before passage, to now every five years. And it also changes the term of the charter review commissioners from what was one year to now two years. Are there any questions regarding this particular amendment? All right, thank you. Move on to the next slide. So the charter amendment number five, which is called the Ethics Oversight Amendment. This was another one that was proposed by the Charter Review Commission. It talks about an ethics code, an independent ethics oversight commission and an ethics oversight and compliance office. So the ethics code, what it states in the charter amendment is that it requires the county council to adopt a code of ethics by ordinance by July 31, 2022. The code of ethics will include penalties for violations. And it, the code must be adhered by all departments and entities that receive funding through the county budget and all officials elected or appointed to administer county government. And then beyond that, for the independent ethics And then beyond that, for the Independent Ethics Oversight Commission, that has been delegated per the amendment to the county manager to work in conjunction with the council, to appoint an autonomous ethics review commission, which is comprised of qualified individuals in the area of ethical conduct in government. And then that commission will be charged with hearing and ruling on complaints of violations of the code of ethics and the independent reviewers to investigate complaints and potential violations. And then the last part of that is there's an ethics oversight and compliance office, which shall be established by the county manager. Part of that will include operating what is called an ethics complaint hotline. That office would accept and investigate potential ethics complaints and provide staff support to the Ethics Review Commission.
Leslie, I'm wondering, has anybody looked into what this will cost? I mean, the commission may be, you know, just a stipend or something for people to sit on that when it's necessary. But this Ethics Oversight and Compliance Office sounds to me like it's going to cost us something. And what budget do you suppose that will come out of? And maybe you don't have that answer, but perhaps Kathleen or the Budget Office has looked at this?
Well, I can let you know quickly, and certainly I'll let Kathleen speak as well. I did review the FAQs on the Charter Review Commission website. And according to that, they took into consideration, you know, what that cost might be and looked at Pierce County. According to the FAQs, Pierce County annually budgets $60,000 for its Ethics Review Office and Commission, but over the last few years has spent an average less than $15,000 per year for its Ethics Review Program. And in terms of where that, you know, would come, I'll let Kathleen talk to that issue.
We'll have to review our budget for that. It was my understanding, and you know, this will be, we'll definitely look at it as we move forward, but it's going to be similar to like Commission of Aging Commission. So you have community members who are commissioned that oversight, and we have staff support that provides part-time support to that commission. So I'm hoping that we'll have a current staff member that we can start with that general support of the commission and answer the hotline and the phones. And then we will evaluate to see how much is coming in and if we need to allocate additional FTE or budget towards that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this particular amendment?
If I may, I should have mentioned this for the last one. So it's an alibi, very quickly, just so the public knows. You know, there's only one other charter county that has gone the route of basically allowing their charter committee to hit two election cycles, meaning it's not every 10 years, and now it's going to be every five years. It's going to be every 10th and 11th year. Or in another way to look at it, instead of every five years, it's going to be every four. So the issue was a glitch in the amendment that allowed this committee to not only tee up these amendments for this past election, but even though their work is done, they're considering it not done. And they're going to put charter amendments up next year as well. So it becomes a two-election cycle because of the gap in the law. And only one other charter county has done it that way. So I think it's important for the public to know that that's going on. They have considered their work not done, and they're still going to be teeing up additional charter amendments, even though they shouldn't be doing it until five years from now.
Thank you councillor Medvedji. If there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and move to the next slide. So this is amendment number seven, which was also proposed by the Charter Review Commission. It's basically puts in minor corrections and technical clarifications into the charter. They're essentially non-substantive changes. There are sections where it has been revised to update particular RCWs. And the one, though, has to do with the redistricting process, which the specific language states that it directs the county's redistricting committee to avoid splitting of precincts by district boundaries in crafting the redistricting plan, which occurs with every 10-year census. Other than that, it's more of a Scrivener's changes to that particular section of the charter. Was there a question?
I just wanted to point out that you used the word avoid. And I know that, so it isn't strictly, they cannot. It says to avoid it, correct?
Correct. That is what the specific language says.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions on this one, we'll move on to the next slide. So the next two amendments that council should be very aware with, since they were, you know, proposed by the council. This particular one clarifies procedures for processing initiatives, many initiatives and referendum positions. And I have down here that there's timing and process. Basically, the provisions regarding to initiative procedures, it added some clarifying language. For instance, within an additional 10 days, the prosecuting attorney shall evaluate any petition that is submitted. That wasn't in the original charter provision. For many initiatives, it states that the council should hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, or, this is the added language, an amendment to an existing ordinance. And then for referendum, it has included the term proposal or petition proposal in places where it just had the word petition. Also adds that the auditor shall transmit a copy of any referendum position that's filed, not only with the prosecuting attorney, but it adds that it is given to the county manager. And those are basically the changes proposed by this amendment. Are there any questions by the council?
This is effective January 1 of 2022?
I believe so, for me.
I don't read what we stated in.
I think you are correct in that. Let me check. But in the meantime, let's go to the next one, and I'll pull up the language here. Okay, it actually is the same as the others. For eight, it says it's effective immediately upon adoption. So it would be the November 23 date for 2021.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this next one then is the amendment number nine, which was also proposed by the council. And this has to do with the initiatives, many initiatives and referendums in unincorporated areas. And so it specifically states what happens if there's an initiative and many initiative or a referendum that is introduced that would affect only in unincorporated area. And then which voters would be required to vote for those particular initiatives, many initiatives or referendums? Specifically, for instance, for referendum, the individual filing a referendum must be a registered voter residing in the unincorporated Clark County. The signatures gathered in support of it must be from registered voters in the unincorporated Clark County. And only those registered voters residing in unincorporated Clark County would be eligible to vote on the particular initiative, many initiative referendum. Are there any questions on this particular amendment?
I do.
Sure.
I understand we were notified by the auditor that they did receive a mini-initiative just yesterday. So that was received prior to this new ordinance going into effect in January. So then the issues that I would tee up right away to start thinking about is, one, how many, does that apply to the entire county or just the unincorporated area? And would it fall under the old law or the new law? Because it was filed just recently before the new law came into effect. And that would impact the number of signatures required as well. One of the comments during this process or questions that came up, well, how do you know if it applies to the entire county or just the unincorporated area? And, you know, one of the Ts is, well, is it defined that way? Does it apply to the cities or not, to the annexed areas? So anyway, I just see that this will be tested or explored right away with the initiative that was just filed yesterday with the auditor's office, the mini-initiative, I'll say. But if you need to further research that, or do you have an answer right now? Would that mini-initiative filed yesterday fall under the old law or the new changed charter?
Thank you councillor Medvedji. That's a good question. So I'm reading the amendment, and it states that it goes into effect immediately upon certification of the election results. So it actually is in effect now. And I have not had an opportunity to, you know, see that particular mini-initiative at this point to determine whether or not it affects the entire county or the unincorporated areas. So that is something, you know, once it gets to the council, we can certainly take a look at that.
I'm pretty sure that it affects the entire county because it does state all land, et cetera, et cetera, throughout the county. So it is, I think it encompasses that. At least that's my understanding.
But in this case, it's a mini-initiative, so it's not a vote of the voters. It's a vote of the council, comes directly to the council.
Right. It comes to the council, yes. So, and so that, although it would, if it were only affecting unincorporated Clark County, of course, the signatures could only come from unincorporated Clark County. And I think that was probably the direction of the question, not who voted on it, who will vote on it, but who could sign it and be a valid signature, so.
Yeah, and the numbers required, because it's less required.
Yeah.
Well, thank you councillors. That is the end of my presentation, unless you have any other further questions.
There are other questions, Leslie, before we close this section? I don't hear any. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to council reports.
Chair O'Brien, this is Kathleen, if I can.
Okay.
I would like to amend the agenda under New Business and talk about a potential interim ordinance for sale of fireworks. And it's not for approving anything today, but getting direction from the council if you want to move forward with this, if the council's okay with that.
Okay, without objection, we'll add that to the agenda.
Would you like me to do that topic now under New Business?
Yes.
Before we move forward.
Yes, please.
So as you guys know, you received some information from one of the firework vendors in Clark County asking for the council's consideration for an interim ordinance for the sale of fireworks. And this is over New Year's. As you remember, last Fourth of July, there was no fireworks due to the fire band or the excessive heat and dry conditions. If the council is interested in looking at an ordinance to permit the sale of fireworks over New Year's, which is not normally permitted under our current ordinance, we would need to do a notice, special notice for a special meeting. It does require a 10-day notice. So the earliest that the council could meet and be within those guidelines would be Friday, December 17. And then if approved at that December 17 meeting, the fireworks sale then would begin 10 days following that, which would be December 27, which I believe is the same timeframe that the state uses. The daily sale would be from December 27 through the 31st, from 12 noon through 11 p.m. So my question to the council today is, is this something that you want to take under consideration and have staff send out a special notice meeting for Friday, December 17?
I would be in favor of addressing it. As am I.
I'm not interested in pursuing it.
I'm not in favor of pursuing it.
I am.
Okay, we'll pursue it.
We will look at calendars and probably look at the morning of Friday, 17, at 9:30 or 10. So we'll work with staff and get that notice sent out today. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to council reports.
Any councillor? Madam Chair, if I could, right away, because it kind of goes back to the beginning of our work this morning. I kind of felt like we left it up as to next steps on the body cam dash cam. We really didn't discuss what we would do next. I did send an email to the manager. So I thought it was worthy of discussion. Basically, I think the two options were to bring back a draft resolution and data from the finance office for the council next week and discuss other details at that time. Or we could, we just need next steps as to are we going to pursue this other alternative funding tax? So I wanted to just kind of close the loop as to what we wanted to do next and when.
So I think it is a good thing for discussion. And, you know, an ordinance could be drafted or a referendum, whatever, whatever goes to the people, because it's going to go to the people. But it won't go to them until August, which is the primary for 2022. Isn't that right, county manager? So I
Correct. If you want to have the vote go back out the earliest, the vote could hit the ballot is August of 2022. There are deadlines before then when we need to get the information to the auditor's office, but that's when it would be on the vote.
Just to follow up on that, maybe the resolution that we reviewed last time, we can just re-review it and update it, because I think councillor Medvedji, it does cover what you'd mentioned earlier in terms of dedicating funds for body cameras and public safety purposes. I think it's pretty all encompassing. So maybe if we could review that while we're getting the other data from Mark.
Yeah, so I think that's sensible. So maybe we can do that, Kathleen, and schedule it in the near future.
Well, we can either include it on next week's council time or at the first of the year, because the council does not have any further council times through the remainder of the year after next week.
Given that there isn't a rush on time, I'd suggest next year, when we get started in January. I think that's a good plan myself. It gives time for all of this to kind of dovetail together, and then we can do it.
Yeah, well, one of the other alibis that we had discussed in our manager meeting with us or with one-on-ones was the notion of how we reach out to the cities. was the notion of how how we reach out to the cities. Will there be a letter? You know, signed by the chair or councilors to explain what the proposal is and ask for their comments, support. I mean, I I'm hoping that we don't lose sight of continuing to move forward on this issue, even though we have time before the next election.
I'm okay to wait till next year, but I also do think that some some communication to the cities in terms of here's what our plans are. You know, how can we support? How can we work together? How can we communicate? Not not a requirement, but just a general, let's all get on the same page to promote this with our own communities and our own constituents. And maybe we can do that, you know, early in the year as well.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to kind of tie up what I thought was the loose end.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilor Bowerman.
I have the same interest, but on a different topic, as tying up a loose end from the work session this morning. There were a couple of items from the transportation planning presentation that it was mentioned that would be inappropriate for follow-up on by us during the work session, but rather during a council time. Is that to be on the agenda for next week? And if so, I would like to make that request. Or is it for today?
I think it'd be for next week, myself.
Okay, well, then the the two items are regarding first, the third corridor. And secondly, staff made mention of the need for greenhouse gas policy for that to be drafted. And I I think we need to discuss that and ask for staff to come forward with with a draft.
Sounds good to me. How about without objection, we will we will discuss that work plan next week and add those. I think those two items are, you know, we had a thorough a rather thorough discussion, maybe not on the greenhouse thing, but we did have questions and answers on that. So I would I would agree with that. Next week, we'll address that. Thank you. Other councillor reports? Work session requests.
Yes, there is one work session request from Community Planning and Public Works. This is for the 2021 Annual Reviews and Dockets. The desired result is to brief the council on the DACA items that will come before the council in public hearings in February and March of 2022 and to provide the council with the summary of the Planning Commission recommendations and answer any questions before the public hearing. The work session requested is for mid-January for about an hour and a half.
Okay, without objection, we will plan for that work session mid-January. Lindsay, do you have any policy issues to report? We had our meeting yesterday, but.
I did. The only thing I will mention is that now that December is upon us, the prefile bills will start on Monday, so we'll keep track of that and we'll let you know.
Okay, great. Okay, we are going to go into executive session. One pending litigation for 10 minutes, another pending litigation for 10 minutes. So that's for 20 minutes. We will have legal counsel present for that. And and we will leave this. Will there be action afterwards?
There isn't. There is no action afterwards.
No action, but we will. We're not. We're not going to adjourn. We'll come back. Oh, do we need to do that in this case? Yeah, we won't. In this council time, we will come back and adjourn after our executive session. So.
In check, Warren, if I may. So since there's 20 minutes, the council will come back into public session at in 20 minutes, which would be 12:06.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
12:06. See you on the other side. It is now 12:11. And we're going to reopen council time after the executive session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? And if not, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good day.